Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Caddo Parish Commission Work Session. I would like to call this meeting to order at 3:30 PM on May 19, 2025. At this time, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones and go read yourselves accordingly. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Crackman is absent. Commissioner Greg Young. Looks like he is absent at the moment, but he is in the building. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner John Paul Young is absent. Commissioner Burrell also absent, but in the building, or at least was very recently. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
Commissioner Everson.
Present.
Okay, you've got eight of 12 commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum, and it's likely that you will have two additional members show up soon.
Thank you so much. We've had our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance in our prior meetings, so we will forego those two items.
Okay, and under Agenda additions, we do have one potential Agenda addition today that's on your electronic agenda, and that is the potential addition of a special, the advancing of a special resolution recognizing May as Lupus Awareness Month.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open for the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding this potential Agenda item for recognizing May as Lupus Awareness Month? To recognize May as Lupus Awareness Month. I see none. I declare this public hearing closed. Have a motion on the board from Commissioner Vice President Ken Everson and seconded by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas. Vice President Everson, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, ma'am.
Parliamentarian Thomas?
No.
Okay. I see Commissioner Ron Cartherin.
Thank you, Madam President. I brought this ordinance as a result of talking with one of my constituents and not knowing that this was actually the month for lupus. But the thing is, again, the experience that she had had, I was hoping that she was going to come here because she was going to just share a little bit about her concern in her family, entire family, from what she shared with me, and the disabilities that it's caused throughout her family. But again, rested at this time, if she shows up, I'll come back to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartherin. This is an item that we introduce almost every year, and I just think that it was omitted this year, but glad to see that it's back on the agenda. All right, I see no other discussion. Please vote. And this is to add this item to the agenda?
And that motion, it carries with all in support. That's eight in support, none in opposition, and four absent. And that brings us to visitors where we have no scheduled visitors, though we do have a visitor here that will be speaking under the administrative report, which is our next section. If you would like, I'll move forward to the administrative report.
Yes, before you move forward, what resolution number would this be added? And where would we add this?
It's going to be 11.6 is the new special resolution. It's going to be 11.6.
Thank you. And do we have any citizens' comments?
We do not have any requests for citizens' comments today. Thank you for asking that, but there are none in the box.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. That brings us to reports where we start with the admin report.
All right, Mrs. CEO.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to notify you that we were notified that the early voting sites, the one for Oil City has been approved, but the one for West Shreveport hasn't been approved at this time. They are saying that it was just a delay because they only wanted to establish one right now. We'll have to determine how we proceed on that, but just wanted to notify you. Reminder that we do have the Walter B. Jacobs tour scheduled for Wednesday. Parking at the site is very limited, so we would like, for those that will attend, to come to Government Plaza, and we will have vans that will take us out there. You should have the April 25 financial statements at your stations. The numbers for juvenile, we have 21 in detention, none of those are 17-year-olds, 461 on probation, and we have 29 at CCC, and 21 of those, 29 are 17-year-olds. We do have Ms. Latoria Thomas with United Way who's going to come before you and give an update.
Mr. President.
Before we get that update, I have, Commissioner Atkins is on the board, but I have a question also. You mentioned that we received information from the state about approval of one of the early voting satellite locations?
Yes, ma'am. They approve the one for Oil City at the museum there. What we received was that that location was ready to go and that it was the furthest location, and they wanted to do one each year, until they wanted to do this one this year. That's what we found out when we called. This wasn't in the letter. We called to find out why only one was approved and said those were the basis for that one that they, we called back in January, and they would work on the other location.
Okay, so the infrastructure that was already laid out in the prior one before that one was passed wasn't discussed. I would like to make a recommendation to move this to our Public Safety Committee for a further discussion, and I think that there's a meeting already scheduled that will be coming up in two weeks from our meeting on today. So I would ask Vice President Everson, okay, and this has been seconded by Vice President Everson, to move it to your committee for an Agenda item for discussion. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarity on your request for the Public Service Commission, pardon me, Public Service Committee meeting, are you asking that issue around the new voter, pardon me, new early voting site in West Shreveport be evaluated, or are you requesting that both sites be reevaluated?
I'm asking for the recommendation that we receive back have further discussion in the committee.
Okay, and just for clarity, the discussion that came back from the state is that they're prepared to do one in Oil City, but not in West Shreveport?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Okay. I see no other questions for administration at this time. Madam CEO, specking your hands.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Thomas?
Go ahead. I'm not sure what you're saying.
Madam Chair, before we go?
Yes.
Just a point of information. I thought the chair was making a motion, and I seconded, so that wasn't necessary. The chair really has the authority to appoint something to a committee.
Right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Point well taken. Welcome, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you for having me, Madam Chair, for the invitation, and to the Commissioners, thank you also for having me. I'm Tori Thomas, or Latoria Thomas with United Way of Northwest Louisiana, and I'm here to present the latest ALIS report. Every year, or every other year, United Way works with the rest of the United Ways in the state to produce this report about ALIS, and ALIS are those in our community that work every day, but they just don't make enough money to make ends meet. So you'll get to get a little bit more in-depth. I put a copy of the report, or I had a copy of the report put on the dais for each of you to review as I go along. So who is ALIS? Well, ALIS first stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Again, we want to express the employed piece of it. A lot of times, people think, okay, well, if they just work or work harder, they wouldn't be in the situations that they're in. And so this year, with the ALIS report, we really did a deep dive on how employed citizens in our community, in our state, parish, and city are really faring, and it is really eye-opening. So every day, ALIS makes choices that really seem to be impossible. So do I pay for medication, or do I get my tire fixed because I have a flat tire? Or sometimes the decision is, I am riding on a donut, but all the warning lights in my car are also on what can I afford to get fixed? We are finding that ALIS, and not just ALIS, majority of the people in our country, don't have $500 saved for an emergency. And so when you don't have $500 saved for an emergency and things come up, it just makes you teeter further and further off the financial cliff. And so ALIS really will fall off that cliff first and foremost before anyone else because there are just no social safety nets to help them. So in Louisiana, what we found is 19% of the households in Louisiana are within the poverty threshold. 30% are in the ALIS threshold. So for a family of four in Louisiana or in our nation, poverty is considered $30,000. So if I make $35,000 or $40,000 and I'm a family of four, how much more am I faring better than those in poverty? And because I'm outside the poverty threshold, I don't qualify for SNAP assistance, childcare assistance, or oftentimes utility assistance that people put forth to help those who are experiencing those hardships. Though in Caddo Parish, the numbers are quite similar, just slightly higher. 22% of the households in Caddo Parish are in poverty, 31% are ALIS. So just really, in a visual term, I could split this room in half, majority of the people are experiencing financial hardships. So we also want to look at the demographics of those hardships. 66% of the people in the state of Louisiana that are African-American are ALIS and below. That is astounding. It was the highest when we look at the racial demographics. But what we really saw that scares us is those who are just now entering into the workforce and those who are under 25, 78% are ALIS and below. And it, I mean, it makes sense when you think about they're fresh out of college, they're working, you know, entry-level positions, but if they are not given the tools that they need to be successful, like financial literacy and financial coaching, they may not ever get out of that situation. And within that demographic, we're seeing first-year police officers, first-year teachers, first-year firemen, they really struggle to make ends meet. In Caddo Parish, similar results. So 63% of African-Americans are struggling financially, 70% under the age of 25, and single-headed household with children, that regardless if it's a male or female, 76% of them are struggling financially. And then across the entire state, when we think about who's struggling, East Carroll Parish had the highest percentage of those within the ALIS population or the ALIS threshold or below, and then Cameron Parish was 33%. So it's the parish with the highest people who are actually thriving financially. When we think about our region, the Northwest region, because we are United Way of Northwest, we look at the 10 parishes that we serve, and we found that Bossier Parish, which was actually about the fourth in our state that is thriving, only 40% of their population is an ALIS or below population, so they are doing fairly okay. But 40% is still kind of high when you think about, in terms of just having a really thriving community. But Claiborne Parish had 73%, which is the second highest in the state of those living in poverty and those at the ALIS level. And then we dig deeper into Caddo. Oil City, Oil City and Vivian were really tied for first, or really close together. Oil City has 84% of their people experiencing poverty and are in the ALIS threshold, and Blanchard is 35%. And so I also want to include this so you can kind of see most of the municipalities within the parish and how they look. So as you can see, Vivian and Oil City have the highest rates of poverty in ALIS, so the two blues, the light and the dark blue, are ALIS in poverty, and then anything above and of the ALIS threshold is the yellow. So as you can see, Blanchard and Belcher do fairly okay. Shreveport is there in the middle, but Oil City and Vivian were, and Morris were, are really showing high concentrations of poverty or high concentrations of ALIS. So why does this matter? Why do we want to make sure we talk about the ALIS population? When we did this, when we commissioned this study and worked with the group out of New Jersey, the United Way in New Jersey, who really helps do the research for this, they found that for a family of four, a household survival budget, and that includes childcare, housing, transportation, et cetera, really needs about $81,000 a year. And that does sound like a lot, but if you look really closely at that housing number, that's saying roughly we're going to spend about $1,000 on housing. And there, a lot of people know that for a family of four, rent sometimes exceeds that $1,000 a month. Childcare is the largest expense that a family could have if they want quality childcare, particularly for their children. So imagine when you put childcare assistance with an income threshold, you're now priced out of it, so then you make the decision, should I cut back on hours to qualify for this childcare assistance? Do I stay home with the child? Like, these are the decisions that ALIS make. And so if you look at the next part of the pie chart, two full-time workers, one is a personal care aide and one is a stock worker, and the reason those two positions were selected is because they're part of the top 20 jobs in our state. They don't make enough working full-time to meet all of their needs. So that really does put a hindrance on them. They're nearly $30,000 short of their essential survival budget, just based on them working, each one of them working a full-time job. And then again, just a visual representation of the median income for our state, plus the qualification to qualify for, the income level to qualify for SNAP, and then that of poverty. Another thing that the ALIS report kind of dove into this year that we hadn't done in previous years was we really did look at how many people in our state have a salary job, and it's only 21%. So majority of the people who are working, they work hourly. And so that means that if they don't go to work, they don't get paid. Even if they may have some vacation time or some time off cover, it's often not enough to cover them to have extensive leave from work. And then, of course, we looked at the most common jobs. 44% of the most, the top 20 common jobs don't earn enough to be above the ALIS threshold. So that is also another factor that is hindering our citizens from making their ends meet. Here's the trend line statewide of ALIS and those in poverty. So as you can see, it is trending, trending up. More people are becoming ALIS every day. Our population grew about 17, I'm sorry, about 8%, sorry, but 17%, we had a 17% increase in the ALIS population. And then just in Caddo Parish, I thought that this was actually pretty interesting. If you look at our poverty numbers, the trend line is trending up, and the ALIS population line is trending down. So that just means that while we have an increase in the percentage of those who are considered ALIS and below, more people are trending up to be in poverty. So our parish is actually getting poorer. And then I just thought that this was a great quote from one of the ALIS people that was studied for, that was interviewed for the study. It definitely has been difficult. I have a lot of debt, you know, medical bills that we need to pay, so definitely every little bit helps. That really does put into the mindset that they are not spending money on things like vacation and fancy clothes, that they really are make, trying to make good decisions with the money that they have. And, but it is very hard because ALIS knows every dollar that is coming in and out, and oftentimes, those dollars are already spent before they receive their first paycheck for the month. And so they're just trying to make the best decisions that they can with the little bit that they have. And so when we do these presentations, we're doing them to really raise awareness around that ALIS does exist, and the official stance of United Way is that one of the things we would like to see is an increase in the income threshold for families to qualify for public assistance, SNAP, housing assistance, utility assistance, et cetera, because it is very critical that we increase that income limit so that we can help more people potentially keep them from falling off the financial cliff. And this is just ways that you can reach us, our website, but I will also send you your specific district numbers after this presentation, and I will also send you the link to the ALIS report because I think you gain a lot of information from playing with the interactive tool so that you can do a much deeper dive in your district, what your people are going through, so that you can see how you can also help. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Ms. Thomas, thank you so much for your service to our community and for raising awareness about the challenges faced by asset-limited individuals who happen to be employed. One of the things that you addressed is to make sure that we are doing our part in advocating for the increase in income limits. One of the questions that I had was going to be about how can a citizen receive the information, or how can they become a part of the sources that you're providing about financial education?
So, United Way, we accept any individual, so our services are not limited based on income. We help everyone. So if you go to our website, unitedwaynwa.org, there's a link for 211, which will provide information about all of the resources that we have in our, in our city, parish, state that is available to individuals. You can put in your zip code. We know that there's a growing increase in people who don't like to talk on the phone, so you, when you go to our website, you can actually search our database for the resources that are available. All it asks you for is your zip code, and we will provide you with those resources that are closest to you. If you are within the midst of a situation where you can't see your way out of it, and you just need someone to hold your hand, we actually have a case manager on staff who will follow up with you if you've reached out to 211, just to check to see if you need some further assistance. She can call the resources for you. She can help you identify what resources are still available for you. As well, we really do like that, that service. That is one that we continue to fight for and fundraise for because a lot of times, if I've experienced a house fire and I have a child who may be traumatized from that house fire, I may not be able to know who to call to, to just get us some clothes for the next few days.
Yes.
But my case manager can do that for you. She has a great way of just holding your hand and helping you through the situation. Ms. Watts knows very well.
Absolutely.
Because we get a lot of clients from, that says, I talked to Commissioner Watts, and she said to call you. And then for those who really have financial constraints, but they are working, sometimes it is that they just don't have the tools to know how to manage their money very well. It is sometimes, not often, but sometimes. We do have the Financial Empowerment Center as well. We have a young woman that we tell her story often. She came to us, we were able to help her save $10,000, reduce her debt tremendously, increase her credit score, and we were able to do this, and she eventually purchased a home. In the time that we worked with her, she did not receive a pay raise. So it is sometimes that get, just giving people the tools that they need to be successful is what we do, and we do that work with her for free. So anyone can contact us, and all of this information can be found on our website. You can even set your appointment with the Financial Empowerment Center on our website.
That's awesome. Are there any alternative support systems or programs that could help employees navigate these, the limits?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Are there any alternatives or programs that can help actual employees offset the asset-limited employees?
Well, we don't do any like job training and any work like that, but we do have resources within 211 that can help individuals find training. We have been advised to work with the NLEP to figure out those programs to make sure, one, that they know that those programs exist through 211, but then also, where we see our primary role is going to those young individuals who get these great-paying jobs and giving them the financial literacy early on in their career so that they don't find themselves, as I just, I call myself, when I was young and dumb, money comes in, money goes out, and I, and I don't think about the future. So we, but we figured that our place is to really be there when they first are starting out in their careers.
Wonderful, especially with our first responders and essential workers, as you mentioned. I have Commissioner Roy Burrell, who's on the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These kind of reports, you know, really depresses me, and I've been looking at them for years. Since United Way is such a large organization, does your organization provide this information to our state and congressional folks? Because they hold the purse strings on a lot of this, like Medicare and Medicaid, you know, and you're talking about healthcare, and it takes a big chunk out of, out of everybody's Do you all advocate there?
Yes, we do. We're actually going to the state tomorrow, to the Capitol tomorrow, to advocate for early access to quality, early childcare now, to talk about income limits, et cetera. United Way of Northwest Louisiana is a member of the Louisiana Association of United Ways, so our, our association actually advocates at the state level, while each individual United Way advocates at the local level.
Okay, what about on a congressional level?
We do provide the information for our congress, our representatives in state senate as well. We have a United Way Day at the, at the National House in DC in July. So we, we take it all the way up to the President of the United States. Should we get a meeting, should our United Way Worldwide president be able to get a meeting? But I am trying to work to get a meeting with Mike Johnson now, and then we have a meeting scheduled with John Kennedy.
I'm just interested in what, what their response is whenever you see the actual figures. There's so much propaganda that is put out there, political rhetoric, we all, we've all heard it. And, and it gives a perception to the public that somehow they are, you know, that they are making all this money, these poor people are making all this money and they're wasting it. That's what I hear. And reports like this with empirical data should at least land somewhere. So my concern is, what, what kind of response do you get? Are we just putting this paper out there for wasting paper bases, what you don't?
So for United Way of Northwest Louisiana, our report is really for the state level. We do have, we do work with our United Way Worldwide, which is the, the national organization, to make sure that we fund the reports about these local issues, that it gets funneled up. The United Way of New Jersey, which helps us do the research for these papers, they, they have a group, it's called United for ALIS. Like, that is the whole purpose of us doing this, that we get this at every congress, at every level, whether it's city, congressionally, state, or nationally. But our role, for, for me, is to really focus at the local level and let our state association focus at the state level, and our United Way Worldwide really help us get meetings at, at the national level. Because the Speaker of the House is from here, we do have some, some leeway to get a meeting with him. It's just been much harder since he's become Speaker, but he has sat on, sat in meetings with us reviewing these, these numbers in the past, and they, and they were positive. I cannot speak to what happens when he leaves the meeting, but he is aware of these numbers.
Okay, again, I was just concerned, what kind of response do you all get back? One thing to put out information, another thing is to get feedback from it.
At the state level, we, it's been At the state level, we, it's been very positive. These numbers have been used to advocate for the childcare assistance dollars. And so it has been very positive. It's where, and I, and I think children and issues around children have a much more unified voice. It is when we get to other issues that are a little bit more divisive. So we do try our best, and Stormin knows, we try our best to get in where we know we're going to have some successes. Again, to continue to raise awareness around these issues is, is, is critical. Whether we have buy-in in, in the beginning or not, it's not going to stop us from continuing to share this information, because the more we share it, the more we get it out, the more we arm people who, who may see later on that it is important that we start talking about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Okay, I see no other commissioners on the board to speak. Thank you so much for the presentation. Mr. CEO.
That concludes the administration report. We'll take any additional questions at this time?
The Chair recognizes Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, I wanted to get animal services up.
You, Mike. They're here.
Good evening.
How you doing?
I just wanted to get an update on that, on that dog that bit my grandson.
Is deemed dangerous without the bullet. She agreed to the term.
I'm sorry?
She agreed to the terms of the dangerous dog stipulation.
Okay, and that will, what does that do, dangerous dog?
They have a, they should have a sign on their house. Anytime they take it outside of the yard, it should be muzzled. Large yellow and red collar, the dog is fixed, chipped, and up to date on vaccinations.
Okay. So I don't have to take my grandson in for rabies? A check I don't give?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. See no other commissioners on the board?
Are we in communique, Madam President?
We are in communique, reports and other items related to the work session agenda. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank our, our commission team for arranging for these nice new chairs. They, they really are much more comfortable than the old ones, and we actually sit up a little higher. Can, some of us can actually see over our computer. So it's, it's a, a nice addition to the, to the horseshoe here. So thank you all for your efforts in securing those. Thank you, Madam.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Great point, well taken. And I agree. Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to send a special shout out to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Patrick Wesley. I want to thank you, and also Mike and his team for this past Friday. As you know, at Bessie D. Smith, we did have a celebration in honor of her life and her life's work of providing resources to the Stoner Hill community. It was really, really great to be able to provide those services to the community. And your team worked extremely hard. They went above and beyond, and I wanted to say thank you, especially thank you to Mike, who led that effort on the grounds. Also, I wanted to send a special shout out to a recent graduate, Ms. Faith Montgomery, who's a student at Cattle Magna High School. She was named a 2025 Gates Scholar. She was one of the 750 students chosen nationwide. It's a highly selective competition in which they had 48,000 applicants. Forty-eight thousand applicants. And Ms. Faith was selected. She is going to be attending the University of Pennsylvania in the fall and plans to major in nursing with a pre-law track. This is a scholarship by Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and I just want to say congratulations to her. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to remind everyone of the Juvenile Justice Committee meeting this Thursday at noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Emerson.
Yes, just want to remind everyone that the Pines Road Area Business Association, in conjunction with the Veterans Celebration Committee, American Legion Post 450, American Legion Post 14, the Beale Cockrell Community Parks Council, will be sponsoring our annual Veterans Memorial Program Thursday, April the 22nd.
May 22nd?
I'm sorry, May 22nd, 10:00 AM at Beale Cockrell Community Center, Order 109 Pines Road. If you have a deceased veteran, you can bring a photo, or you can give their name and information, and we will memorialize them in a very moving ceremony. The Boxdale Air Force Base Honor Guard will be there, and our guest speaker will be Ms. Twana Fields Jackson, retired Master Sergeant, United States Army. Also, the Wonder Oasis Water Park, located at 7670 West 7th Street, is formally open for the summer. Be open from May 16th to September the 1st. So kids and adults will have somewhere to go out and enjoy themselves in Cattle Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Emerson. Commissioner Ron Cartheron.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a Personnel Policy and Procedures Meeting, Committee Meeting today, and we were able to formulate and make a decision to actually, the third body that would be a part of the committee, not the committee, but would be a part of the staff here. It was really interesting, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Cheryl McGee for doing the research and the background that she did to bring the information to the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartheron. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to announce that there will be an Appropriations Committee Meeting held Thursday at 2:00 PM. Wanted to let all committee members know about that. Also, there will be a meeting this evening in the Stoner Hill community at Valencia Park. And also, I want to invite my colleagues and the public to join me on May the 23rd, 2025, at Beale Cockrell Community Park. That's Ms., the Joyce Bowman and J.D. Hudson Awards Luncheon. That's going to be at 11:00 AM. And our, our President, Madam Stormy Gage Watts, will be receiving an award for outstanding contributions to the City of Shreveport and the Parish of Cattle. Once again, I hope that you all can join us in celebrating her Friday, May the 23rd, at 11:00 at the Joyce Bowman and J.D. Hudson Awards Luncheon. So congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Thanks, everyone. See no other commissioners on the board? Next item.
Did we have a president's report for today?
I will hold it until Thursday.
Okay, we have no old business scheduled. So our first item of new business to attend to today is to consider the advancing of introduction of Ordinance Number 6545 of 2025. It's an ordinance admitting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund and the Economic Development Funds. To appropriate funds in connection with the SkyWest Airlines project, this item did receive a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee today.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones, and it's been seconded by Vice President Ken Emerson. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Got the green light?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to englobo in advance. Items 11.1, 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5, the agenda addition, which I think is 11.6 now.
Yes.
And open to any discussion or feedback that needs to happen therein, if I can have a second?
A second? All right. Commissioner Cartheron. You was on the board? You on, okay. All right, I see no other discussion?
At this particular time, in reference to 11-6, the lupus, I would like to ask one of my constituents, Ms. Angela Durham, to come up and just kind of share. And thank you for reminding me of this being the month to recognize lupus as well.
Good afternoon.
I stand before you all as a mother.
I'm sorry, would you please state your name for the record?
Angela Durham.
Thank you.
I stand before you all as a mother of three daughters that have lupus. One is deceased. I don't know how, if everyone is aware of what lupus is. It's an autoimmune disease that unfortunately attacks healthy cells and tissues, and which causes inflammation in the body, which causes pain. And it, it comes in different forms. All three of my daughters, it presented differently with all of them. So my daughter that's deceased, unfortunately, it attacked her organs. So that's how she's no longer with us. A lot of people are not aware of lupus. So every year, we have a, a big walk every year at Columbia Park. I'm blessed to be a part of the board, the Art Tammy Fleming Lupus Foundation Board. We do a walk at, like I said, at Columbia Park. This year's going to be on May 31st. Trying to get it out there. My children, you know, started out with it. They weren't adults when they, they got this. So they were, you know, young age, the last one that just graduated from Seabird High School. Last week, thank God, was diagnosed her sophomore year of school. And of course, with her knowing that she had a sister to pass from this, you know, scary for her. And so I've been trying to research, you know, a little further, you know, and there is no cure. All you can do is get treatments. Right now, she gets treatments once a month, every month, having to get stuck, you know. And for you to see your child go through that, you know, of course, we want to try to see what we can do to go beyond, you know, just here in Shreveport to see, okay, hey, what else can we do? What, who else can we pull in to bring awareness to this, to try to get, because you know, hey, everybody has something going on monetarily where, okay, well, I'm giving money to this, I'm giving money to that. But if we can kind of make it a little bit more recognized, you know, we can get maybe some larger people to view our city, you know, and say, hey, they need help down there with, you know, bringing, you know, some resources in to help with, you know, better treatments and what have you for, you know, our lupus warriors. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming to share and raise awareness. And we've always supported that walk, and we will continue to support it.
Okay, thank you.
Stand by, stand by.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
I'm on for something else, but I do want to address, could you please make sure you give us the information regarding that walk, so we can try to support that as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Our condolences on the loss of your child, and our prayers for your other two daughters. I was hoping you could educate all this a little bit. You know, I've had friends that had, that have had lupus, but I've never heard of it affecting multiple people in one family. You know, is it, is it a hereditary thing? Or how, how is lupus, how does lupus?
And, and to give you a little history with myself, the old, the oldest daughter and the second, well, my, my second and third daughters are both biologic, by their dad. Now, I didn't think it had anything to do with me until my baby girl, because they have different fathers. And so they've been testing me. There's a marker that they test, was called the anti-DNA double strand. And mine shows positive, but it doesn't show any symptoms or anything through me. So I get checked every six months, you know, to make sure, you know, it doesn't, the marker doesn't increase. So they're still looking, researching. They hadn't really connected a genetic thing with it. So the research is still ongoing.
It's still ongoing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
See no other commissioners on the board? All right. The Chair recognizes Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to, for the benefit of my colleagues and the public, on Item 11.2, Ordinance Number 6446, those were some properties that we had discussed previously, that were for donation under the Reinvest Cattle Program. Realizing the scope of what the project they want to do, they're not going to do the donation route. They are going to purchase them from the tax roll. So just wanted to clarify that for you guys, so y'all would understand what was going on.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the final vote. We're still waiting for Commissioner Burrell and Emerson. Oh, Emerson had to leave the chamber, so. Okay, that motion carries with aid and support, none in opposition, and for absent, and brings us to Communicating Committee Report, Second Round, where Commissioner Emerson, who did just need to leave, had an item. But I imagine he may bring that up in a subsequent communique in the future. So that brings us to Citizens Comments, Late Arrivals, where we do not have any requests at the moment.
Mr. Clark, I, I have one commissioner on for communique's, or I have two, actually. Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to announce something that we all received today, the 2025 Summer Morning Mix by the Yazzy Youth Celebrating Jazz Foundation. I've participated in this as, in the past. I once again know how influential this was for me and my life. These classes are instrumental music, theater, dance, visual arts, voice, and stage management. The dates are going to be going through June the 9th, through July 26th. That's Monday through Thursday. And they will hold hours between 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM. And though, they will be held at Justin Fundamental Magnet. The age requirement is ages seven through 24. They will have a final performance on July the 26th at 6:00 PM at Riverview Theater. And this year's theme is Yazzy Jazzy Christmas in July. The participants must audition for this, and the auditions will take place on Saturday, May 31st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Morning Star Baptist Church. There is a $100 registration fee that applies. However, they do have scholarships available. I'll announce this additionally, but I just want to make sure we got that out there as soon as we got it. So if you have any youth that are interested in performing arts, this is a great opportunity for them to spend their summer working with Yazzy. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Mr. Clark, I just forwarded you the information for the Walk to End Lupus.
Thank you, and I just got the information from the Speaker on her way out.
All right, if you will share that with everyone.
Gladly. Thank you very much.
I also have an invitation from the Chief Executive Officer of Sportran, inviting us to the grand opening of Sportran City, a milestone that marks a bold step forward in modern community-centered transportation management on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025, at 2:00 PM, 1253 Texas Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to share with everyone that JEMS, the Girls Empowered for More Society, Ms. Huckabee has come a couple of times to speak to us about the program for STEM for young women in our community, is having their Spirit Night tonight at Andy's on Yuri Drive from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So go and enjoy some custard, and a percent will be going to their Girls Program. And then I wanted to also share that the LSU Shreveport Pilots Baseball Team has gone to their World Series for their division. And so we have a lot of really great things happening in our community with sports, and so I'm just very proud for them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. See no one else on the board? Any citizens comments, late arriver?
No, ma'am.
All right. And I have a motion to adjourn. Mean adjourn. Thank you.